I would like to call the Board of Library Trustees Meeting on Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, to order at 6:47 PM. Thank you.
So, good minutes.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes? Read over the minutes?
Yes. This is Diana. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Now, is there any discussion? Okay, I made a few notes. Let me just, not really to change it, because I don't remember the answer. On the second page, when they talk, when you talk about HVAC, the units for the senior center and community room can use the grant money. If the building was all, it was all done at the same time, I'm assuming we have the same unit that they do? Or have ours have been changed?
Well, if they got grant money to replace theirs, and I mean, it would be up to us, I think, at the time, if we wanted to try to get the same ones, and but we'd have to, it would have to be paid for without grant funds.
Oh, okay. All right. And that was the only comment. Anyone else have anything to say on the minutes? Hi, Teresa. Okay, so I'm gonna call, or do a roll call for the minutes. Linda?
Oh.
Diana?
Um, yes, approved.
Pam?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Myself, Corinne. Yeah, so all in favor. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Director's Report. Starting with statistics. Nothing really significant from previous months. I did just want to mention, I think we forgot to talk last month about hotspots. You know, they're doing pretty well, but I think at this point, the two we have is sufficient. I think we need to wait a little bit more to see, you know, people aren't really going on vacation, and that's when people use them a lot. So, if we are gonna purchase more, I think we should wait till, you know, things kind of get more back to normal. But other than that, everything is pretty much stable with the statistics.
I have a question on the hotspots, if I may. We know we have a couple patrons that might not have internet access. Do you know if they're aware of the hotspots? Or could someone possibly reach out to them and see if it might be helpful for them? I'm not sure what technology they might need to go with them if they have a needed computer or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, they would just need, you know, a device that is Wi-Fi capable.
Right. I don't know if the couple I'm thinking of might not have that.
Right, and I know of two people that don't have anything. So, for example, they take an ebook out and get a hotspot.
They'd still, they'd have to have a device, though, like a computer or tablet or a phone with Wi-Fi. It just basically gives you Wi-Fi internet access. So, you still have to have a device to access things on.
So, they can't borrow a device from the library?
No, they could borrow one of our devices, yeah. They'd do that, too. So, they'd have to have both then, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so we're probably thinking of the same two people. Maybe you talked to them anyway, Corinne. You were on the reach out to them and see their interest.
Sure, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Thank you.
See, moving on to budget update. So, we're almost halfway through the fiscal year, and we're in good shape. We still have state aid funds that will be coming, so we still have those to rely on. So, everything with the budget is going smoothly. No big changes there. Moving on to programming.
Could I ask a question? This probably has been answered already. The gas line. Why is it so low this year for expended?
That usually, in the winter, is when the higher costs, we see higher costs with that. So, that's gonna go up. It's one of those ones where, you know, the summer months, it's really low, and then the winter, it's higher. So, it, so that should, you know, that should definitely go up after we've, you know, gone through this winter. Programming, so as we talked before, we had the open house on the 14th, and I think it was a huge success. I estimated, it was hard to estimate, but I did estimate about 30 people who came in for shopping. We had 59 people do the crafts, so that was great. We also did a, the Chums Librarian did a Thanksgiving-themed Take and Make Craft, and we had 24 people for that. So, I think overall, that was really great for the open house, even given the alternative conditions we had.
I think it's particularly good when the craft can tie into a story like the Thanksgiving one, so that's great.
Yeah, we're also doing a holiday one in December to, it's kind of similar thing with, you know, holiday theme, so.
You've been rolling out some really cute ones.
I'm sorry?
I said you've been rolling out some really cute ones.
Yeah.
Yes.
Building and maintenance update. So, earlier this month, we had some roof shingles blow off. We had some really heavy winds and storm. And so, those were repaired pretty quickly. We're still waiting for the phone system to go through. We had, we did get a quote, so the Ryan, the IT guy, is gonna look into that and see how we can get that taken care of. We do have only one phone line. You might have seen, we posted about it. One of our phone lines stopped working, so we are down to just the one. So, I've asked if we can make it a priority to get the new phone system put in. So, we just asked people to be patient, because we did have rise and come out, and they kind of, they fixed their side of things, but it's still not working. So, it definitely seems to be something internal to the building.
What has to happen before we can get the new phone system now?
So, we just got the quote. So, I think Brian's gonna, Ryan's gonna talk to the town administrator, and I think they're gonna try to pay for it with some COVID money. So, it's just a matter of having that go through. I don't think it should be too long. I think they just have to figure out if that's something they can submit through there, and then have, you know, just have the work done, schedule the work to be done.
What was the quote, Karen?
It was about $26,000.
Okay.
Which, I mean, it's for us and the senior center. It's the entire building, and they have to run a lot of cabling.
No, I understand that. Some of the notes I read, I was reviewing things before the meeting. It said we wouldn't be connected to other departments at this time, at another time. But wouldn't it be more cost-effective to do that now than to have a additional expense? Maybe a separate one that would run more? I don't know a lot about phone systems, so.
Well, I think right now, the town hall, they have a totally different system. I think they need a new one as well at some point. So, it would be more, once they get a new system, to tie everything in. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I think this is somewhat of an emergency situation with the phones being down the other day.
Right.
If we're denied funding from COVID, do we have a Plan B? Or do we vote some funding for you?
I mean, I would have to see. I definitely made it clear that we need to have, you know, make this a priority. So, you know, we'll see if that, I'll, you know, I'll talk again to John and the town administrator and Ryan, and see if they think that likely. We just got the quote like a few hours ago, so. Yeah, so I haven't had time to check with them about it, but, you know, definitely make sure it's a priority.
If they turn it down, we wait another month for our meeting to approve funding for you, or?
We could have an emergency meeting if we had to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, if you're not getting, you know, the full response, or if you're not getting full support, I think maybe letting us know, or letting Corinne know, because we could all call. I think it's pretty important that this happens pretty quickly. One line does not seem sufficient.
And I was, I was going to say, would you like me to call as well? And just say, you know, I mean, I've experienced calling in the library, and it's ringing and ringing, and nothing is happening. So, I'd be happy to call also, or if you think it's, you just wanna handle it now, and then let us know if you want me to call.
Well, like I said, I haven't really, I haven't even had time to talk to them since we got the quote. So, let me do that first, and then I'll let you know if we need.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We also have the siding. That is gonna, I mentioned, we wanna have that done in the spring. So, that's gonna have to go out to bid, and that wouldn't be, we wouldn't put the bid out until later, so that, you know, we can wait a little bit on that with, you know, until later in the winter.
I have a question on that, too. I think we've been talking about this for the past three years. Am I right around the right timeframe? Because every time I come to the library and see those posts, I kind of get freaky inside. But didn't we, and I may be just not remembering everything. I thought we had, they sent out for bids before. They didn't, they just had Bob came with someone he knew.
Well, we had gotten quite, quite a ways through. We picked out siding and everything, but then that was when the former town administrator had left, and so the project kind of got.
Okay, so it's like they're starting all over again.
Yes, well, not entirely, but it's been so, you know, it was last year, so now we have to kind of remember where we're at and look at it again. So, we have to do some of the work over again, but.
Okay, because it really needs to get done?
Yeah.
I mean, in the spring next year, because this is, as I've mentioned before, we're at the bottom of the totem pole, and.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm definitely gonna, definitely want it scheduled for next spring.
Right, okay, thank you, Karen.
We also had an energy consultant come in November about ceiling fans, to see if they could put in a grant to have those replaced. So, it's, wouldn't be till the next grant round, so it probably wouldn't be till next year that it would happen if we can get the grant funds. But he's gonna keep me updated to see if that's a possibility. And I'll let you know once I have more news.
Did he give you an idea of what they cost?
No, he didn't. He just, he did like a calculation of how much any energy it would save, and that's part of the grant. He had, he has to, he has to send it to the town, and then they have to submit it to the Green Energy's Community Grant.
Yeah, okay.
So, other, so we have the self-service print release station. A member of sales was here this morning, setting it up. There's still a few things to be done, but it's pretty much all set with all the equipment. And so, we have that set up. We have, I think I discussed at the last meeting that we're working on a new website. So, I was hoping that you could all kind of take a look. I can give you the address. And we're hoping to have it launch in January at some point. So, if you could just take a look and, you know, see if, maybe use it and see it, try it on different devices, like a phone, a tablet, a desktop laptop. See what you think, if there's any issues, anything's unclear or confusing. There is still a few things that are kind of in test phase. So, if you see something not working, I mean, still let me know, but it could just be that we're not, haven't gotten to that point yet. But if you go to test.hansonlibrary.org, that's what the new site will look like.
Would you be able to email us the site, just to make sure we?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
I think I have it.
Yeah, so, you know, we're, made a great, you know, a lot of progress, but there's still a few things to kind of tweak. So, any questions about any of that? Okay. Just an update on library services during COVID. So, I think I'd sent you an email that we pulled back a little bit. So, we, you know, eliminated computers. We had a lot of people, people that were coming in to use computers, needed a lot of assistance. We were finding that staff were having to interact with them. So, we've eliminated computer use for now. We're trying to do everything we can possibly do through curbside that way. Your holds pickup, faxing, picking up wireless print jobs. We are still letting some people in, but yesterday, we only had four people, and usually, they're in and out. So, you know, but I'm still gonna monitor kind of as we go forward, and maybe especially after the holidays, to see if we need to even pull back further. We, like, see, let's see, last, last month, we had 288 curbside and 292 appointments. But like I said, I think a lot of people now are trying to kind of cut back themselves, so we're not seeing the number of people we were in November. And then we're doing inside the lobby. So, instead of putting things outside, now with the colder weather and snow, we're putting things out in the lobby and just locking the inner doors, so that people have, and we put a doorbell inside, so people can ring the doorbell in there instead of outside. That's kind of updating. Like I said, I'm gonna kind of monitor this as we, you know, on a week-by-week basis, to see if any other changes need to be made.
Karen?
Yeah?
Can I ask a question regarding the computer use?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting a trouble. The people that were using the computers, do you know if they're one, that do not have computers at home? Or were coming in just as a way to get a change of scenery and use the computer?
I think a lot of them wanted to print. I mean, I don't know if they had, maybe just didn't have a printer at home. So, that's kind of with the majority. But then, if something, you know, they didn't know how to print it, or something came up that they, you know, we would have to help them. So, that's why we temporarily eliminated that.
Do we still have any devices that could be checked out by somebody?
We don't at this, well, we have the, just the, like ebook. We don't have the, like a lap, laptop, or.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna get the Chromebooks, but then they were on such backorder that we didn't get a chance.
Standing line, so.
I'm sorry?
Okay. Standing line, so, yeah.
An ebook, you can get onto the internet.
What was that?
You can get onto the internet with an ebook.
It depends.
Yeah.
It depends, I guess, on what model and how.
Yeah, some of them can, some can't.
Yeah, I have an iPad, so. And I hardly ever use it anymore.
I have a question about the reduced hours and trying to keep people out. So, for the foundation, I was going to repost the baskets again about making appointments and such, but then I saw your email, Karen, and I decided we, and so we talked about it. Yeah, this is the trustees, but I guess from the trustees to the foundation, what is your thought in terms of continually encouraging people to make appointments to come to the library, come inside to look at basket? Should we just put that on hold for now, or what are your thoughts?
Well, like I said, I'm thinking at least until, I mean, because we wanna sell these before, you know, before the holiday, right? So, I mean, it's only like, what, a week or two away? So, I mean, I think we could, because we can, we can always try to schedule them at a time where, you know, it's really limited. There, you know, maybe they're the only person in here. So, I don't think it's that big of a deal, because like I said, I think we'll probably stick with what we have, at least until, you know, Christmas time. And then maybe after Christmas is when we may have to think about pulling back with the, you know, the surge that they said happens after the holidays. So, so I think it might be okay now to, to promote them. Okay.
Yeah, I shared onto my Facebook page, and I even put that anybody that knows me, that I'm friends with, that lives locally, I'd be willing to do curbside delivery.
Yeah, we could even do that, too. If somebody saw something, they knew they wanted it, we could just, you know, have them pick it up curbside. Do it that way, instead of having them come in for.
It might work for some people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any questions about any of that?
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the draft or the town report article. There are a few changes, I think Linda had asked to make. So, slightly different than what I'd sent you before. If you have a chance to look over it, if you. Is there any other questions about it, or are you ready to vote on it?
Oh, go ahead, Corinne.
I just, on the second page, first paragraph, the last line, it says, "The debut of the foundation's shopping fundraiser, which was a huge success." I read it, and I'm just saying, like, the wording, "shopping fundraiser." I guess I was looking for something with more, but I don't know what I'm looking for. I mean, I.
Would you be happy with the word "basket fundraiser" instead of "shopping"?
I think I, I like that idea. I don't know what anyone else thinks.
Yeah, I could change it to "basket."
Fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That page also, on the paragraph we're talking about, also in 2020, about the trustees were pleased to welcome two new board members. The next sentence, "The board would like to offer best wishes and gratitude." Would that be appropriate, or appreciation, to former members Joanna Styes and Jen Hickey?
Yeah, I like the idea of either appreciation or gratitude.
Okay.
What does anybody else think? Any thoughts, or?
Both appreciation.
Yeah, okay, and appreciation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I move that we accept the report with the corrections noted.
I second. Okay, all in favor? I mean, is everyone in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Pam?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
While we were talking about the membership of the trustees, I probably should have mentioned, I didn't notice this earlier. The top left on my screen has Hanson Library Board of Trustees meeting December 15th.
Yeah.
Trustees listed are not accurate.
Oh, Jen Hickey's listed.
Oh, yeah, that must be, that's from the older.
Not updated, right?
Yeah, maybe the, we can, I think that's Whitman-Hanson Community. We can tell them to update that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to changes to staffing, we talked about last meeting. So, I'd like to bring this to the Wage and Personnel Board in January. They have an annual meeting where they discuss changes to the bylaws. So, I tried to kind of slim it down to what we would, you know, present to them, as opposed to all the changes I'd hoped to make kind of on a larger scale. So, essentially, we would be asking them to create a new position, Youth Services Associate, move the six-hour Youth Services to that position. It would drop the job description that I'd sent you, and then adopt the revised job description of the, for the Youth Services Librarian, and then change the bylaw salary ranges, as you see on the sheet that I gave you. So, those would be the changes that we would request, and I would write this up in a letter for them, and submit it to them for their, I think it's January 5th is their meeting.
I have a question, if I could.
Yeah, sure.
The Youth Services Associate, would that be a professional position in wage and personnel, or a union position?
It was, it's wage and personnel. It would remain there.
So, it's considered a professional position still?
Yeah, well, I don't know if they even have that distinction now. It's the wage and personnel and union, but it's actually the Administrative Professionals Union. I think we, at the last meeting, we discussed how, you know, adding certain jobs, it wasn't clerical, but they don't, they actually don't call the Clerical Union anymore. It's Administrative Professionals Union. So, I don't know if that, that was kind of maybe some older, like they used to think of things in that way. But now, it's not as clear-cut in those terms, so.
You said you sent us the job description. I'm sorry, I don't recall. What are the recommended educational requirements for Youth Services Associate? Is it something you're gonna update when a new person comes on board, or?
So, I put in an associate's degree required and bachelor's preferred.
Okay.
That's what I had in the job description I sent out. And that would be something, I mean, it would, you know, when we, if we submitted to them, that that, that's the one that they would be looking at to adopt.
Okay. How would you feel about it being union versus wage and personnel, if the union felt that they wanted to make an issue of it, or?
Well, I mean, eventually, I'm hoping, or I'm thinking maybe all of them would be union, or, because, right, you know, if I'm gonna be making some changes, it would be kind of strange, as I said, to have some of them in and not, and others not. So, and I know some of the staff wanna join the union that are not currently in it, and, but I don't know what the process is for adding jobs, or if, you know, how it goes, if it's by the position of the person, or. So, that's something I have to talk about. I mean, right now, it would be, this would, we would all just be in wage and personnel. And then, at a later date, if we wanted to talk about updating and changing them to union or wage and personnel, that would, that would come later.
Okay, was it situant when we visited the new library? They said they had two different unions for their employees, one for professional and one for non-professional staff?
I don't remember exactly, but.
Possibly. I don't know if that might be something to consider, or if it matters at all. They changed the name from clerical. So, I don't know that much about it.
That's something I wanna look into. And I know some libraries, they have their own union. I mean, there's a lot of variations, but, and like I said, I don't know what the process is, so, or what their original rationale was for separating some of these things away that they're separated. So, I think some of it was monetary considerations, rather than, you know, what the actual jobs were. So, but that's something, I think, in future, that I would definitely wanna look into.
Okay, maybe the town administrator could give you some guidance, too. I don't know.
Yeah. So, I think you have to vote to, if you're gonna change, I think you have to vote, and then they have to vote, if you wanna change any of the bylaw, bylaws that relate to the library. So, if everybody's happy with me bringing this to them, I would just need a vote to, to do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve bringing the proposed staff changes to present to the Wage and Personnel Board meeting in January 2021. Do I have someone to second it?
Second it.
Thank you. Okay, for voting.
Maybe one for the question. Now, currently, it is just a 26-hour Youth Services Librarian position, although it is split between two people, correct? So, by splitting it to 20 hours and six hours, one of these positions will be eligible for benefits and one won't?
One, one already has benefits and the other doesn't, right?
Right, but is that anything that needs to be consideration? Right now, the individual in the six hours didn't want the benefits when it was split. Is I gonna pose any difficulties down the road, do you think?
No, I think, I mean, if the 20-hour position became free, we would hire somebody for that. If the six-hour position, you know, became free, we would, might just roll that into, if, you know, the 20-hour person, if they wanted all 26 hours, we could do that, and they, it wouldn't add any, that, you know, they'd still be benefited. Wouldn't change that, or we could just hire another six-hour and keep it that way, so.
Yeah, the, the current six-hour person has benefits through their full-time position.
Right. We try and think of the positions rather than the individuals itself. Okay, I'm comfortable with what Karen said.
So, Pam, your vote?
Yep.
Teresa? Diana?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Myself, I, so we're all in favor, Karen.
Okay. Okay, moving on to new business. We have proposed trustee meeting dates and then closings, or change of hours. So, start with the trustee meeting dates. I think most of them are the fourth Tuesdays, we normally do. The only ones that were different were August 10th, so that, you know, we usually combine July and August, and I picked halfway between the June meeting and the September meeting for August 10th. But we can change that. And then November and December, with the holidays, the other third, I believe, the third Tuesday instead of the fourth. So, does anybody have any, are there any conflicts? I mean, obviously, now, it's kind of hard to say with things being.
I don't think any vacation plans are out there.
And we can always change it, but just as, to give people an idea of maybe when meetings would be for coming up.
Do you need us to vote on these two separately?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And then closings, we have federal holidays and state holidays. And then we have, as we've usually done, Saturdays between July 1st and August 31st, switching from nine to one, to nine to one instead of nine to three. And then closing that the Saturday, September 4th, is before, the Saturday before Labor Day, which is not a holiday. Um, which is not a holiday, so those would be the only ones that weren't federal holidays.
I noticed that Friday, December thirty-first is not listed.
Yeah, that's a, I believe it's a, um, yeah, it's a Friday, so that would.
Regular day?
Like nine to five. Um, so I know, this year we were doing twelve to five, which I think you voted last year, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to double check. Okay.
Now, in the past, we've had to comply with what was being done at town hall and the union and all.
Mm-hmm.
Is this in compliance?
Yeah, so, um, the, the, one of the days that sometimes is problematic is, which like for this year is, um, Christmas Eve, which is a half day from noon on for the union. Um, and half day for wage and personnel. Um, but since this, next year is a Friday, so if we did nine to twelve, that should cover. Um, that should fit in with what they're doing up there too.
Right, and that's what we switched to, um, last year.
Mm-hmm.
When it came up.
Yeah. Yeah, so, any questions or changes?
Um.
I think it looks great.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed two thousand twenty-one trustee meeting dates. As well as the proposed two thousand twenty-one closing and change of our times.
Seconded by Diana.
Thank you.
Diana.
Um, we're all in favor, I'm assuming? Yes?
One thing, I guess.
Yep.
Um, you're saying.
What, Linda?
December thirty-first, you're saying it'd be like the regular hours, nine to five.
Yeah, so we don't have to put that in.
No, I know that. That's a Friday, so, um, town hall is basically closed anyway.
Yeah, the, I only wage a person, like the department heads work till twelve on Fridays.
Okay, um. I think it's. Crazy myself, but if we have to, to. Meet regulations or not cause problems, I don't think we should really be open till five Christmas Eve, um, New Year's Eve either year, but. Um, that's my opinion. Anyone else want to say anything to that? Karen even?
I don't have a problem with it being open till five. There's so much that's open till.
Yeah, I think we, the last time we talked was it, we figured people were doing stuff later in the, you know. Later that day, so up till five, people are, you know, it's more like a normal day.
Right, that's, well, we, it came up last year when we were questioned, that's the discussion we had. And they, they were saying they were doing things later, so it was like a non-issue. But I, please, you know, if anybody else has any thoughts, please let us know.
And this year is unique, but many years, first night starts well before five. But. Okay, if everyone else is good with it, that's fine.
I mean, honestly, on both of those days, I think it's reasonable to shut down by three. That's what our office has tended to do. Um. And did you say that there was some sort of issue with shutting down earlier?
Oh, we had an issue last.
Well, it's not, it's not a holiday, so we would have to, um, I mean.
If we would close at three o'clock, we have.
I don't know if you follow this, but the, the president's office just declared New Year, um, Christmas Eve a holiday, like for federal holiday purposes. I don't know if that makes any difference, but.
Well, we go by the, you know, the union contract and the wage and personnel bylaws, what's in there. I mean, we could. Do three and then like staff could take like vacation time. Um, that's if the other two hours, um, that's.
Shouldn't have to take vacation time, right, but whatever makes it easier.
But I would be, it's not an official holiday in their contracts, it's, they would have to make up the time in some way.
Excuse me. Yes, sometimes we gave them the option of taking vacation or just sticking the two hours on some other time.
Mm-hmm.
Convenience. I don't care, whatever.
I mean, it's up to you to decide if you want to do.
I prefer not staying open till five. Anyone else?
Well, I think we should just leave it to Karen and that. We're in agreement that if she'd like to give a certain leeway to employees to work other hours, you know, if they want to take off a couple. So that it closes at three, I'm fine, but if that becomes too cumbersome or too, too difficult, then. Leave it to Karen to resolve.
Well, we could wait, just wait on that one and decide later and, you know, next year at some point and kind of think about it. Um, and just vote the other days and say, we'll think about, you know, you could always vote later in a few months on next New Year's Eve, since it's so far in the future. If you want to just do that.
Okay, yeah, why don't we do that, yeah, yep.
Okay.
But this is Diana. Does Teresa's comment about the Christmas Eve federal holiday? Is that something that is going to surprise us?
Well, they would, you might have to re-vote, but the, um, if, if they update, they would have to update the, um. The con, you know, the contracts to include that as a, as a full holiday, because right now the way it's listed, as I said, it's a, it's half a day basically for everybody.
Doesn't the contract, the contract doesn't say all federal holidays?
No.
The contract.
Days.
No, and didn't Teresa, didn't you say the president just said this Christmas Eve is a federal?
This Christmas Eve, OPM just came out yesterday and, and made this Christmas Eve, just this year, a federal holiday.
All right, then, um, what we could do is say, um, I made a motion to accept the trustee meeting dates. And the closing changes, and then if something comes up, if that. The next year too, we'll have to address it in two thousand twenty-one, because right now I don't think we can all of a sudden just change. Next year, Christmas Eve, because with the union and everything else that goes on, I think we should just leave it as it is. Um. We can address December thirty-first. I would say by maybe the week before Thanksgiving, we could, we would know. And we'd be able to make a decision. We probably would know in advance, but, um. I would just hold off, you know, subject to change in two thousand twenty-one. Is, is that okay with everyone?
That's fine with me.
Yes.
Yep.
I would assume the town administrator might make a town-wide ruling too if. Were affected by the presidents.
Right, yeah, so for this year, I mean, if, I mean.
For this year, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, then you may, we may have, we'll just go, you know, if they say to close, then.
Yeah, the town administrator would have the authority.
Yeah.
Pam, are you okay with it?
Yep, that sounds fine to me.
Okay, thank you. All right, so all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so that was all I had. Um, did you have anything recap, Corinne?
Well, I didn't get to see last week's. Selectment meeting, well, there was the foundation. I thought I'd be able to see it the next day, but I haven't been able to. And I know that there, something is continuing for weeks here, so, uh, because I started to watch it tonight, so I'll make sure I catch that one. And I haven't heard from Maquon Reuse or the PCH, but I do know the. Um, the RFP is out there for, um, Maquon, you know, to get. Someone to be interested in the property. So that's all I have on that.
Okay. Um, did you have any foundation updates, Linda?
Um. Membership drive seems to be going well. We're a little behind last year, but we. Received twenty new donations for the two thousand twenty-one membership so far. Um, well, twenty donations, two are memorial donations. Um, the online. Auction for donating has been tremendous success with eleven people donating online. Um, so I think that's amazing. Um, we. Were contacted by Jerry Lozo, who's offered to have some professionally printed, um, foundation letterhead made for us. So, um, John Carosa is working on, um, updating the heading to include the new, um, logo, and we're excited about that.
What a guy, what a guy.
I know, anyone know Jerry? Yeah, so very grateful for that offer. I guess we talked about the membership and briefly the gift cards, so I think that's pretty much it. Unless anyone has any questions. Um.
The membership. The membership, five. Um, I know it's hard because it, we're contradicting, we've got the Facebook page now. Um, but we still got the baskets we're trying to move. Is that something we want to be putting out on that Facebook page? It might already be out there, right? Could be mistaken.
So I owe Linda a call.
No problem.
Just sorry, Linda.
Um, not at all.
Just to strategize about that very thing so that it didn't get lost in the shuffle. Um.
Well, our membership does continue into two thousand twenty-one in January. The end of December, we will be doing a mailing to previous donors, US mailing, who haven't contributed recently. Um, so. It's not bad to stagger the requests, so I think we can do something on Facebook, maybe after the basket sales are done.
Like maybe January first, you know, do a big, yeah, start the year by supporting your library, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Or how about December twenty-six, posting something, you still have time to make. A, um, donation. For two thousand twenty, you know, with the date being twenty-twenty, they can still, if they itemize on their tax return.
Right, and this year people get a three hundred dollar deductible, even if they don't, option, even if they don't itemize, so, um, that would be good. By the end of December.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, um, just to remind us, we're meeting next January twenty-six would be the next meeting, and we'll do six forty-five again. That seems to work for everybody.
Okay, all good.
Okay, okay. Next foundation meeting is scheduled for January fifth at six thirty.
Okay, that, well, that's the wage and personnel, so I probably wouldn't, yeah.
We can change that if you want. Would the next Tuesday be better?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah, I have that free.
Karen, do you know, has Greer gotten back to you about when we're going to the meeting?
He hasn't.
Meeting, okay, all right.
Since we have to reschedule anyway, should we change it to six forty-five? Does that work better? Yes, okay, we will.
Look at that smile.
And, um, the twenty twenty-one foundation budget, um, Karen. I'll put you on the spot and ask you to think about it till the next foundation meeting anyway. If, um, library support. Um, amount, we budgeted seventeen hundred dollars for two thousand twenty, if that's something you. Feel comfortable with the same figure or if you want to have it increased?
No, I think that should be fine.
Okay.
We're carrying, like we said, we're carrying some over, so.
Right.
So that should be fine, yeah.
Um, there are a lot of unknowns and programs, I think. I don't see us spending anywhere near what we have previously.
Right.
On programs, but on the other hand, I'm not sure we'll, um, be able to meet our income of previous years either between fundraisers and. Um, we didn't have this year the trivia, et cetera, so. Okay, good, that's helpful. If anyone has suggestions, let me know.
Okay.
That's all I have.
The date?
Pardon? I didn't create.
Did you select a date to change the meeting to?
January twelfth, six forty-five.
Thank you. Okay, no one has anything else, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. The Board of Library Trustees meeting of Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty at seven thirty-one PM.
Second.
All in favor? Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, holidays.
You too.
Say thanks to the staff.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Yeah.
Bye.
Sure, everyone.
Bye.